It's, I find it's pretty much on the outskirts of.
There's, there's a map right here.
Henry's in the way.
You see it's surrounded by reds.
The question is.
You're talking about the, the, the purple area, obviously, is what we're looking at, correct? Right, on that one side, it's, and it's actually removed itself somewhat from the commercial sections that have already been built up. Again, I'm not, understand, I'm not faulting what's being brought before us. And if that was the first parcel, which would be the one in front there, and then it had all the red all the way around, it would literally create that, that spot zone with the bullseye right in the middle. I just wonder if this is not a, I wonder if there's not a means by accomplishing the same end without having to modify the zoning ordinance.
And if it had come back to us, if it had come back, if it had come to us instead of a CEP request as a rezoning request for something like mixed use, then it's really the difference between if it's a, a yellow creature with feathers and limp feet, but it's not a duck. But the real question here with this, the rezoning is, is it okay to consider higher density residential than V3? And I think it's, I think it's fine.
Any further discussion on this motion? The man, clerk, if you will hold counsel on the proposed ordinance amendment, Chapter 30 zoning in Christiansburg Town Code with lofty family densment allowances in the V3 general business district, please.
Councilman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Holland? Councilman Hubbard? Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
I heard five ayes and one no.
Yes, sir.
In the motion carries. Item D under the discussion by the mayor and council members is contingent upon item three that you just passed. Additional use permit request by Ballser and Associates, agent for RWW36 LLC for a planned housing development at the end of Farmview Road, tax parcels 436A, 37, 38, 39, 40, and 41, and a portion of 436A, 36, 35, and 36 in the V3 general business district. That public hearing was also held on February the 7th, and we do have a recommendation.
Therefore, be it resolved that the Christiansburg Planning Commission recommends that the Christiansburg Town Council approve the condition use permit with the following conditions, and there are 13. The presented general conditions of opposed mega builders multi-family development as revised January 27, 2012 shall be considered as condition of approval. Development shall be in general conformity with the presented Exhibit A site rendering and mega builder's overall plan and mega builder's conceptual master plan drawings as revised February 7, 2012. The development shall provide a cul-de-sac at the end of Farmview Road Northeast. Development shall provide a bus shelter for future bus stop if deemed appropriate by the town. The development shall provide a second public ingress and egress access easement or public street, including trail or sidewalk directly connecting to Laurel Street, Welcome Street, Sycamore Street, Orpepper Street Road, prior to the issuance, and we'll read it the way that they recommended, and then they may change, the developer may change. Prior to the issuance certificate of occupancy for two, for his 200th unit or five years from issuance of the first building permit, whichever occurs first, and then the developer proffered that they would build it before the first certificate of occupancy. Farmview Road Northeast shall be upgraded to North Franklin Street. Farmview Road shall be upgraded to North Franklin Street to the town engineer satisfaction, including installation of sidewalks on one side of the street. Developer shall provide a trail connection to the remainder of either tax parcel 436A, 35, or 36 at a location to be approved by town staff. Costs associated with water and sewer main upgrades are to be borne by the developer. Development shall be limited to the maximum 615 bedrooms. Stop signs shall be required at the intersection of Farmview Road and Sunset Drive if deemed appropriate by the town street committee and town engineer. A second lane shall be required at Farmview Road off of North Franklin Street if deemed appropriate by town street committee and town engineer. There shall be a minimum of three feet green space between the curb line or sidewalk if the sidewalk is placed on the Whitman side, which is the southern side of Farmview Road. Approval shall be subject to the revised traffic study prepared by Virginia Professional Engineer, including peak hour turning movement counts performed for AM, midday, and PM peaks at the intersection of Farmview Road and North Franklin Street. Future build out year of the development according, accounting for background traffic growth are rates determined by VDOT historical traffic counts or VDOT slash town planning data, site trip generation volumes to anticipated future year no build volumes, and future year site development traffic analysis using highway capacity software or CENTRO to develop, to determine impacts to the existing traffic signal with the following measures of effectiveness to be evaluated. Movement and intersection delay, level of service, queues to determine capacity constraints related to development, and to identify mitigation solutions. Approval of condition use permit shall be subject to the site plan addressing recommendative improvements of the revised traffic studies and satisfaction of town engineer. And six As and two As.
So is unanimous for those who were approved, people who were present? A second. A motion and a second to approve. I see that there are members of the Hairston family here this evening. We want you to know, folks, that you have our sincerest condolences on the loss of John Hairston. You had mentioned last meeting that you were concerned about how this project would impact your property, or the property of man John Hairston. We don't know that it will impact it in any way other than a positive way. The traffic counts will be higher, but I don't think it's going to impact Sunset Drive that much. And I'm apparently, fairly convinced, based on what we've heard here, is that the integrity of your property is going to be as is. So with that in mind, I don't know whether that answers your problem, your question, Colette, but my, my personal thinking is it'll probably increase the value of your property.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
Make one recommendation. The proffer that was offered, was offered after the public hearing, correct? So with the recommendation, if the developer seems willing to, to build the second access point out of the gates, so I would recommend, or I recommend to whoever made the motion in the second to consider changing the wording of item number five and strike the word 200th unit and put the first unit, and then have a period after the first unit period and strike the rest of it four or five years from issuance.
Okay. And a second, with that change, any further discussion?
I got a quick question for Mr. Stipes. The traffic study that's going to be undertaken, that's, again, that's something that you're fairly familiar with. Could you give, give us just a brief, I mean, a very brief rundown as to what that entails?
Well, basically, what it is, it's a reality check. We've had, been given some numbers, and the street committee has been, had some discussions, and we're going to be presenting, or we'll be discussing it more, and hopefully, this is something we need to be doing more of, and that is when we have significant traffic generators. This is a reality check on what the public impacts of a development project are going to entail. In a case like this, this traffic study will require not a burdensome effort, but a, a reality check by the developer and the developer's advocate to go out there and actually identify what is the traffic out there today, what is, what are the actual turning movements, but what, if you went out there and basically stood at the peak hours of the day, and that's literally what they do is go out and count traffic. How many people turn left, how many people turn right on the existing road network, then that project's not being built tomorrow to be built, it might go, the opening day of that project might be 2014, might be 20, whenever that opening day is, the existing traffic is grown, it's called a background traffic projection. What's the background traffic is projected forward two years, it grows a little bit, one to two percent a year. So that background traffic is grown, and then the, the estimation for how much traffic that the new development is going to generate, those are, that's pretty, pretty reliable, it's national standards for that Institute of Transportation Engineering that has, how many trips does, does a residential unit generate, different types of residential units?
You've been involved in some of these before I take them.
Well, it's an area practice of mine, yes, but as a town, that's something that most localities require now.
Right, and with your experience in this, obviously, we're talking about if there needs to be a turning lane there on Farmview, correct?
Yeah, and so.
Access into Franklin.
So the, the, the traffic study is actually a, a reality check in the town's interest to make sure that if we say yes to a project, that the town is not going to be left holding the bag after the project goes online, and you have undesirable traffic situations out there.
And your estimation at this point with the amount of units that have been being built, do you estimate that there's going to have to be a turning lane on Farmview?
I, I do, well, that's a risky, I don't want to get into that.
Just an educated guess.
An educated guess is no, especially with the secondary access point, because I suspect that with the, I suspect with the, the secondary access point, there'll be some need to assume how much traffic is going to use that, but I suspect a lot of the people that'll be living there will be people that are wanting to get out to the bypass and head to Blacksburg, and the only way for them, or the only way for them to do that coming out to Farmview would be to turn left, go up to Cambria Street and do a U-turn, it'd be a mess. Think about how you'd have to get right on the bypass to head west.
So, so they, in other words, you would estimate since it would be a turn, turn on the, on the, the Franklin, that in fact that that secondary accessory would be used primarily by those people going to Blacksburg?
I don't want to give an educated guess or a professional opinion on that. What I'm saying is, this is a, this is a significant traffic generator, albeit only a fraction of what could go there as a commercial zoning, but it's going to generate more than 2,000 trips a day. It's a major tra, or it's a significant traffic generator, so this step is something the town should require on this project and on other significant projects to make sure that we don't create problems for ourselves. And in mega builder's case, if we require this for the next application up there, that will protect their interest to make sure that some future yes that we were to say yes to doesn't create a, a terrible traffic situation that devalues their property as well. So, but a good example of that, if we'd done this 20 years ago with, with the marketplace property, access to that property now is, is its greatest liability, you know, but anyway, does that, does that answer your question?
It does, I, I was wondering if, just really, if you thought if, whether or not it was going to end up being, given your past experiences.
More or less not, especially with the secondary access.
So, so, so right now, we're looking at, then, from your perspective, that it's going to be no secondary, no, no turning lane on Farmview, and that that secondary accessory will actually be used by quite a few people to go towards the Blacksburg area?
You were starting to ask me as a professional. Simply put, that's why you do the study, that's why you play the game.
Mr., as I brought it up, this, Mr. Barber and I last time had a concern with Farmview, about the traffic backup on Farmview.
I tell you what, the reason we need to do this is quite honestly, so we're showing, or we're demonstrating to our citizens that we're doing our due diligence in making sure that when this project goes online, that we can explain whatever answer comes out of that study.
And I guess where I was getting at is, with objective national standards, are there towns in which his objective national standards are inappropriate for local application in Christiansburg because of certain variables?
In general, no.
Eccentricities.
But the, you know, for a large traffic generator, he might, it might tell you that you need two, two, a dual left turn lanes and a right turn lane and a through lane.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stipes.
All right, let's, let's understand now, that Mr. Stipes' professional opinion, or his professional experience is saying, no, there probably will not be a need for a turn lane, but please don't take that to mean that as counsel, that Stipes.
I really shouldn't be speaking to that.
Right, the traffic study will explain.
He asked my opinion.
The traffic study.
Yeah, I appreciate that, in a side into it, I was trying to figure out myself.
Will we get a chance later on, after this development is built, to, to recheck this?
In this case, in this case.
Is that open?
VDOT has, VDOT is going to be reviewing this traffic study. It's going to be done by a practicing traffic engineer. VDOT will review it, and then they'll come back to the town, and we'll sit down with the town and, and determine what, you know, review the results of that, and whatever recommendations come out of that to mitigate any negative traffic.
Well, so my question is, will it be reviewed after the development is pretty much finished? And then at that time say, hey, the traffic is backing up, do, do we have that, that option?
That's, that's really not.
They do it right at the beginning or not?
Well, that's really not typically something you can hold a developer.
But what we can probably do then, I guess, is take Section 11 on the proffers and just modify to say, if deemed appropriate by the town street committee, comma, town engineer, and/or town council. And then you've just solved it, and that way it gives us the opportunity at some future point to come back in and say, you know what, the VDOT standards are this, and, you know, they said there's not an issue, but we're seeing an issue, and therefore, we still go to the final step.
Oh, I think, I think that's a good point, Councilman Hall, I didn't, I didn't, even though Barry read that, I think item 11 does need to be stricken. I would agree with that. Item, because that's what you're saying, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not, not stricken, but added.
He wants to.
I'm worried about the town street committee, comma, town engineer, and/or town council. Right now it just says town street committee and town engineer.
If, oh, if deemed appropriate, well, yeah, oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
And he wants to leave us in the game.
Are we traffic engineers?
No, but we're spokesperson for the citizens that there's an issue up there on that street, that's what we are.
If you want to do that.
I, I feel comfortable with it the way it is, and as Mr. Stipes said, if, we will impose whatever is required by the traffic study, is dictated by the traffic study, and then if some other development goes in there after this, then that development, when it comes in for approval, we will have the option of looking at additional traffic studies if, if we feel that it's needed.
Yes, and I guess I would ask Mr. Hall, I guess the real comfort level is, are we comfortable with the process of a detailed or a traffic study being done and VDOT reviewing it? And my comfort level is high with that.
Sure, you work with VDOT all the time in this traffic.
And then whatever comes out of that, whatever, the site plan will not be approved until it's been satisfied to our staff's.
Staff and street committee, right?
Staff and street.
I think what Mr. Hall is saying too is, he's saying, when this development is finished, and we see cars backing up there, and it seems like there's nothing that we will be able to do to, to be able to try to change the situation and put a lane in. And we washed our hands of it at that, and these people are going to be sitting in line 10 deep.
I don't think you've washed your hands, Steve, what you've tried to do is do what needs to be done up front, so you don't get in a situation like that.
That's right.
In all fairness to Ballser and Associates and mega builders, because we can't give them a definite major approval, we've got to approve the thing.
That's right.
Or we've got to disapprove it, and there's nothing that I have heard tonight that makes me want to disapprove, disapprove that recommendation, so I again reiterate, I move we approve planning officials' recommendations.
All right, we've had the motion and a second. I just want to comment on Mr. Hubbard's statement, and I think it's valid, that after the project is completed, that is not the time to take a look at traffic, it's before everything is done. The one thing we want to avoid is, after the project is completed, the town gets stuck with the expense of having to modify the road, but it could have been done up front. So that's what this traffic study is all about. All right, you ready to vote?
Motion includes the certificate of occupancy for the first unit, it's like an access.
Yes, right. Ms. Clerk, will you poll counsel, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
No.
Councilman Hubbard? Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
And I heard five ayes and one no.
Yes, sir.
In the motion carries. Let me apologize to Mr. Hubbard. At the very beginning of the meeting, he had asked for amendment to the agenda, and I'm going to give him an opportunity at this point, right before we get into item two, if you want to make a motion to amend the agenda.
I, I did, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I wanted to amend the agenda, and I want to make a, a motion for reconsideration of the vote that we took at the last meeting concerning the hemp bill that Mr. Politis presented in front of us, and do you want me to take any more further right now or wait until I vote?
That's good. The, the motion is to amend the agenda to include a reconsideration of.
That's correct.
So we have a motion on the floor.
Senator.
The motion and a second. In order for this to be considered, whoever makes the motion must have voted on the prevailing side, and Mr. Hubbard did vote on the prevailing side.
Does it mean I can't say that it's inside voting?
Robert's rules of order doesn't speak to that, I don't believe.
I'll support Councilman Hubbard.
But we have one other here that's willing to. All in favor of amendment to the agenda?
Please.
If we're going to bring back the same resolution that we had before, I can support it, but if it's a reworded one, and I'd like to see a reworded one come to us before we ask to pick back on the agenda.
That's the reason I stopped him, because that's the reason.
Mayor, I, I agree with Jim, if we're going to reconsider the same one, and I don't think we have time tonight to sit here and rewrite one.
I don't either.
I would propose that we table this until next meeting, so Steve, if you would like to get with Mr. Politis and reword it, there's a lot of it I did not feel comfortable with, but.
What I was going to say.
I just, I mean, we have nothing in, no resolution.
Let me rule on something here. You're saying table the recommendation to.
Well, he can put it on the agenda next meeting, correct?
You're saying table the amendment to the agenda, or you're tabling any consideration of another resolution?
I'll just vote no on it, if it's for the original, to add it to the agenda, we can add it to the next agenda.
If we don't have a new resolution to consider, I would vote no likewise, in hopes that you can bring it up next time with a resolution.
If I understand what Mr. Trump wants to say, he wants to at least bring it back up to discuss under what terms, if any, we would consider re-discussing this thing.
Is that, is that what you're saying?
I'll tell you what, my, my suggestion was that the, the state previously has passed two bills, House Joint Bill 94 and House Joint Bill 600.
Well, let's add it, let's add it to the agenda.
The question before us is, do we want to amend the agenda to include this item?
Tonight.
Tonight.
We got first and second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor of amending the agenda to add the item on the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Then the amend, the agenda is amended, we'll take that.
Thank you.
Later in the.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of the planning commission members. You have interviewed three candidates for planning commission appointments, and we're in the process of doing background checks, and we have background information on two of the applicants, but we don't have a final applicant, a report on the third one, and that was because he didn't get his information in quite in time to, to do it, and we needed a social security number. So what we will do, if it's okay with counsel, we'll go ahead and appoint the two, and we'll hold on the third one until we get the background check. So the two that's under consideration is Ashley Parsons for a four-year appointment and Henry Collins for a four-year appointment to the planning commission.
Submove.
Motion and a second to appoint these two individuals. Mr. Collins is here this evening, and I'm not sure that.
She couldn't, I'm kind of lying.
No, Ashley Parsons is not here. Any discussion? All in favor of appointing Mr. Collins and Ms. Parsons to a four-year appointment to the Christiansburg Planning Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations, Mr. Collins, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you all very much.
Next on the agenda is the easement relocation for the belt department store, and I believe, Mr. Hill, that you have information.
We need to set a public hearing, we got to sound that out this afternoon, or actually this meeting, so I'd like to set a public hearing for that for the 20th of March, vacate to easement.
Submove.
Second.
Motion to set the public hearing on the easement for Belt Department Store from March 3rd.
20th.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We'll have that public hearing on March 20th.
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt just for a second? Is there a question about the vote for amending, adding something to the agenda tonight? Was your question as to how many votes, I, I seem to hear discussion as to the number of votes cast?
The only thing I raised was, I thought the question was, that was put to you, was, are we going to amend the agenda? And the ayes said, yes, we're going to amend the agenda, but I don't.
I didn't hear any no's. You didn't, you didn't add it to the agenda?
Right.
Where you going to add it at?
No, there. Good to you, in numbers.
So we have added it to the agenda, but we'll take it up as the last item.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to watch the mayor, he sometimes noses off. Taxi cab operator's license, Mr.
One additional taxi cab operator, Tiffany Lee Wood, she drives for Christiansburg cab, and police chief, approval, and I recommend approval.
Submove.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve taxi driver license, just one driver?
Yes, we did the rest of them last week, just an additional one.
All in favor of approving the driver, please say aye.
Aye.
When it comes to the recommendation of the police department. Couple of years ago, we started recognizing high school sports achievements, I think it started with the wrestling team that had won about a half dozen state championships, and I understand they just won their 11th state championship last week. And since we started doing that, we have been recognizing kids for state championship honors, and we have one, I think it was Mr. Shawalter that emailed me and suggested that we honor the Christiansburg girls cross-country team, Christiansburg girls cross-country team who placed in the state competition, wasn't first, but, yeah, and, and, and my question to you is, do you want to give me some policy on recognition of sports teams and individuals to include any state placement, or do you want the championship? I'm the one who writes these things. I'm the one who writes these things. It takes a little bit of creativity when you start writing them, and I don't want to get into a thing where I've got a stack of them to have to write all at one time, but give us some direction on how council wants to go. Do you want to continue what we're doing, or do you want to include, do you want to include district or regional champions?
Well, and Mayor, I think you, yeah, said it true, was some sports, you are recognized for top three, just like in the Olympics, and then cross-country's one on track. You do take a podium for that, whereas some sports like, you know, football, even though you're runner-up, it's typical that state champions are the kings of the road, so. I sent out an email right after the mayor wrote me back, but, you know, I'm unsure whether we want to go directly with the policy for this, because I think it does recognize our youth, but I do see the need where it can get out of hand, if you seat districts every year, and, you know, and we're starting to see a lot more state championships.
And it dilutes you, too.
Yeah.
We see a lot of state championships in the same sport.
Well, hopefully we'll see basketball, but we've seen a lot, you know, I think our youth athletics have turned around recently, or in the past.
I think it's one of the best things, we try to recognize these teams. It could get burdensome if you start recognizing district champions and regional champions. I'd like to see it maybe just limited to state, but you determine whether it's first place, second place, third place. But you're right, this was quite an honor for the cross-country team in that they took the podium.
And spent years.
It was recognized as a state champion in third place.
But they have done it before, but it's been over it though.
I guess, I would propose, I would propose that it does dilute it if you just set a policy, then, you know, whatever that, we only do it for this situation, it's less special for the people who come here. I would be willing to trust the council member's judgment. If a council person brings this and feels that it's warrant, significant enough to warrant, you know, if a council person here feels like it's warranted on the case-by-case situation, then I would accept that. If Court is close to, Councilman Hall's close to situation, closer than I, then I would trust his judgment and support him.
I frankly couldn't agree more, because sometimes you almost, if you added that policy, again, it restricts you, but in some sports, you know, third or fourth place finishes every bit as impressive sometimes as a state championship in some, because of the amount of teams that participate. Every team's got, every school has a girls' cross-country team, in other words. Not every school has a football team. It's a tremendous accomplishment, but I like the case-by-case, frankly. And the policy, I think the best word to use is dilution.
I certainly like the case-by-case thing, but I think what we need to do is, I'd like to see, get the community more involved in it also. And what I mean with that is, I'd like to see us set aside eight day a year, or...
Different quarter.
For a different quarter, or some, you know, some way or another, maybe about one time a year, two times a year, something like that, where we recognize it town-wide, and we can recognize, and it could be a council meeting, week, or day, and we just emphasize that day throughout the town.
One thing that we need, too, is that we, again, we recognize the team, but it'd be great if we could, again, we recognize the individuals. For instance, the wrestling team this year has six state champions and one runner-up. It'd be great to recognize the team for 11 straight, which is unprecedented, just about, but also recognize those individuals as well. What'd be great is, at some point, we start getting those signs up on the entrance ways to town, like they do in Radford, that have all the state championships up there.
You know, if we started, if we started putting a spot there for the individual state champions, we're gonna have to have a billboard.
Oh, and not on the sign, the sign's a team. I mean, when we were at the question last time, we recognized the teams. It'd be great to recognize just...
Well, I had no issue with the individual state champions, that's a huge con...
I think that is. I think that is.
What about if you, if you just go to state? If you go to the state championship? Like, if you are wrestling, there are probably four teams there, if you went to the state, that that would qualify, and I'm just throwing that out.
You gotta be careful, because there's so many state placers for wrestling.
Well, or even for cross-country, but they went to state. I think you guys have some good points here. We want to try to recognize as many kids as we can, because it's an accomplishment for them, and it's better than something else, but we don't want to dilute it either, but by saying, hey, they went to state and they went to state level. Actually, I'm just throwing that out.
All right, let's kind of leave it at this. I don't want to do anything that's gonna usurp anything that the school board might do, and they do recognize state championship teams. The only question I have is if a councilman emails me and said, let's recognize the boys' mungly pig team for...
I was a member of that team.
You still got the mungly part in there, man.
Y'all let me finish. They placed in the region, and councilman wants the resolution. Do I write the resolution, or do I wait and bring it to council and say...
Ask him, ask the councilman if he knows more about it, to suggest writing one for you.
Yeah, and I would, that's one of the things I, that made sense to me, I didn't want to make it political. If, I mean, when I was in high school, that was the first time we won districts, and that was a huge thing for cross-country, but they've won it so many times, it's, and we do want to get them involved, but do we want to recognize a higher achievement on top of that, which they've won states over the years and regions, and it seems to go over and over? I don't want to make it more into a political process.
Okay, well, let's kind of leave it at the state championship level, and then if you have a recommendation for recognizing a student who may have, or a team that they have done something special that they haven't done before, then perhaps that'd be a way to address it.
You know, I think we may be missing a little bit of a point here. We're talking about high school sports achievements, but you know, over the years, we've had some fairly decent academic achievements. We've had some teams that have gone to a national accounting competition. We have a, I'm not sure it's a debate, or a high, or teams that have done very well. So I think that, that what we need to, if we're gonna look at this thing, we need to, we need to be all-encompassing.
And we did that last year with the 19...
That's why I think it should, I mean, to some extent, the people sitting here are the ones that, you know, have been elected to make those type of decisions, and I would, if any one of you has a recommendation to recognize a group, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna support it, but I do think it needs to be on a case-by-case.
All right.
Because every achievement's...
Okay, and we do have five this evening. You have copies of those?
I'm able to approve.
You might have five.
I don't have it. We'll take your word for it.
All right, well, we have two state diving champions, we have a state champion in the discus throw, state champion in the shot put, and a state champion in the high jump. And I have those, you should have copies of them.
Mayor, I think you emailed.
They're there. They're right here.
But just to piggyback on what Mike said, I think we should...
And I try to do this myself, and I should have done this one myself, I guess. Anyway, the wording on all five of them, I'm not gonna read them, we'll read these when they're presented, but if you want to look over them, and I think I heard a motion to approve. Second. Have a motion and a second to approve. Let me give you another minute or two, just to look them over. We'll go back, make sure that the grammar is correct and the spelling is correct.
I think the one resolution you have in here, there's, I see at least four that are state championships, but then again, I see the girls' cross-country, they placed third overall, so.
So...
And by the time we get these done, then there's gonna be another stack for the wrestling team, I'm sure.
Yeah, we'll recognize the wrestling team for their 11th state championship, and then we usually leave it up to the coach to introduce each individual. We've got a football team that's runner-up to the state, we'll do that this spring. We've got a basketball team that just won the district championship, and I'm sure they're probably gonna be playing for the state championship as well. And last year, we did it at the... Last year, we did it at the Aquatic Center in the community room, so we could get them all in there.
That was well done.
We'll do that again this spring.
It's a good problem to have.
Yeah, it's a good problem to have. But you have before you the, all of them, including the girls' cross-country team that placed third in the state.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to be approved, all five.
Second. That's what I'm hearing. Discussion? And I may start asking you to help me write this down.
I think that's a great idea.
We need to get somebody sticking in Word and save it.
All right, all in favor of approving the resolutions to honor these young people for their state championship honors, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and we will do that soon as we can get them here. All right, Mr. Hubbard?
Yes, Mr. Hubbard, you want to be ahead of me? Yes, through?
We're gonna hold Mr. Collins for last.
Well, one thing, I realize time is flying here, and I wanted to, and I know everybody agrees with me on this, and I think we should have something in writing about what the Aquatic Center did this past week on the girls' portion of the ACC, and I think everybody read the letter on the, from the athletic director at Virginia Tech, what outstanding job they thought they had done, and of course, there's another week coming up this week for the boys, but I think, I'm gonna say for myself and for everybody, that we really appreciate what a great job that the Aquatic Center did this past week.
We'll take that one with him.
He's leading into it.
Yeah, I understand, just take it page by page.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard, because that was a great event, and I was there for three days and talking to all these teams from across the Atlantic Coast Conference, and they were just, they couldn't be more pleased. Of course, they're going somewhere else next year, but they couldn't be more pleased with our facility.
All right, here I go, okay.
They're going away from campus sites, we're considered a campus site.
Yeah, that's all.
All right, my point here was, when Mr. Politis was here two weeks ago, we, the mayor read out a resolution that had been provided to you by the Board of Supervisors, I take it, and by Mr. Politis. And basically, we did not agree with all the facts in that resolution. I think that maybe it's important, though, that we don't look that we aren't really against trying to, for the state to experiment with things and maybe try to develop these hemp. And if you, I think everybody had a resolution that Henry sent out, House Joint Resolution 94 and House Joint Resolution 605, that's been done in 1991, 1999 and 2001, and I read over it, I imagine all of you did, and I did not see anything negative about those two resolutions. And my proposal was, and this is what I'm putting up as a proposal, that maybe the mayor would go over and pick out from those resolutions, things, and we would, from that, we would make our resolution that we support our investigation of hemp and things that had already been approved by the state, and that's all there was to it.
Okay, before you get into a motion like that, we need a motion to reconsider.
Okay.
You are on the prevailing side, so you are...
I will make the motion, yes.
That we reconsider the resolution in a different form.
Second.
A motion and a second.
I can't say it.
I don't know, Robert's rules doesn't speak to that.
I have one question, that's all, I actually have two questions.
Now, do we, do we still have to go in this?
We're, we're...
Okay, there's...
We have to vote, it has to be by majority.
Okay.
I have a, the only two questions I have are this. I guess, number one, just so I'm clear, we're seeking to draft a resolution that mimics a resolution that's already been passed by the House and the Senate.
Yes, that's my understanding, is that...
Correct, and then my second question is...
All right, let's...
Why?
Okay, good, good question.
Because it's already been approved.
Good question. All right, now, we, those things were passed numerous years ago, okay? Ten years ago, minimum, all right? And I think Mr. Politis is looking for a statement here of some kind of support from different organizations. And we basically just said at the last meeting, we're not supporting your investigating into further use of hemp. And if, my proposal is that we put out the resolution here with some things that needs to be training, women need, needs to be investigated and looked into, and so we would approve that, and maybe even have Virginia Tech do some of that, and to be looked at. So we're trying to be supportive, but we also are trying to put some restrictions on what it's gonna be, okay? So if somebody would be, someone to give additional support to what he's trying to do.
Well, his resolution is totally different than these resolutions.
That's what, that's what's wrong.
Well, that's what we're gonna do, that's what we're gonna do.
Once Councilman Scholalter sent that out, the language is very different in the resolution.
I guess, too, I mean, this means that the town of Christiansburg, Sue Espante is bringing this up for the purposes of drafting a resolution, because we're behind it, when it sounds like we're drafting a resolution to offer support to Mr. Politis, who frankly would not, listening to the previous resolution which we were given, would somewhat not, it doesn't mimic this resolution at all, it's completely different. And again, I, brings me back to the second question, is, they've been able to do this now with Senate and House approval for 13 and 11 years respectively. It's already being done. I mean, and because we haven't requested that they repeal this, I, it's a tacit approval, I guess you could say, from the town of Christiansburg, but I don't understand why we're looking to draft a new resolution, is all.
Well, you say it's been approved, and you say things are going on, but I don't think anything is really being done about it.
But what I mean is the power, though, the power's now vested...
They had the power.
In the group, I don't know what they're doing, I don't know why they're not doing it, or if they're not doing it, it doesn't look like they're doing anything, frankly, but I don't know why.
Who are you writing the resolution to, Steve?
We're writing the resolution to, I guess, to get to him, to...
Yeah, but I mean, who was it, the last one was asking for the US Congress to change how hemp is regulated, changing it from a T E regulated to an agriculture.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, that's a, that's a point. I think we would still, even though these things have been written 10, 11, 13 years ago, we would say, hey, we have become aware of the situation here, and we would just like to say that the town of Christiansburg does support these things being done.
So basically, you're saying, what we would do is, write a resolution that supports these two resolutions, so to speak?
Be supporting nationals, national laws that would allow you to begin utilizing laws that you have on your books.
All right, we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves.
Yeah, you're looking at Congress.
We hadn't yet, was it going?
We're kind of getting ahead of ourselves on the discussion, but the motion to reconsider is debatable, so that was what we were doing, but we need to vote on whether you want to reconsider. But I can't see how we can reconsider if we don't know what we're gonna consider.
I would agree with Jim, but I, I mean, if it comes to recognizing something that was passed, and it's not old, I agree with Court and Jim to where it's out there. I mean, we're not gonna go against this resolution as a council, but can't we send a letter to our delegate in the House of Representatives, and not statewide, federal, which I believe supported these resolutions? When he was on the state level?
And just bring them back to their attention?
Right, hey, or ask him what's going on with them.
Well, it makes you question, I mean, that it was brought to our attention that they supported them initially years ago, and that it was brought to our attention they're supporting them over the last, say, forty-five days.
Yes.
They've been spoken of here.
I would think it's already at a federal level.
Well.
On our, I don't think we have any influence on Kentucky, Congressman, do we, or unless I'm running for president?
I'm sorry.
No, I'm going.
Councilman Hubbard, the, my recommendation here is that we don't reconsider tonight until, as we mentioned, we have something to reconsider.
Okay.
And then my recommendation would be, maybe you request to put this on the next agenda and have a plan in place for specifically what you're asking us to reconsider. I mean, specifically, like, Mayor suggested drafting something that you want us to, I'm just suggesting that.
I, I think that's, that's worthwhile.
I would, and I would encourage it, if you wanna, if Mr. Pelitas is gonna, is he gonna back this?
Well, you might even check with him and see if it means anything.
Well, that's a point.
I mean, 'cause I didn't feel comfortable with the wording in the last one, petitioning hundred and twelve Congress to do something that we were told was illegal. And it was, well, he said, she said, or he said, he said.
All right, so what you're, let me make sure I got that. You're asking me maybe to contact his him and maybe draw up, maybe not necessarily a resolution, but maybe a letter?
Well, whatever, whatever you like us.
I like a letter.
And have that signed, all right?
I will say just that, I mean, and I agree, Brad makes a perfect point, but it's, my issue was not so much, it was with the wording of the previous resolution about petitioning the Congress itself to, to change who would actually regulate the, the issue, but it also goes back to my question. And granted, this may be taken care of by the, whereas by a university affiliated cultural research station could do this. My question, which was still unanswered, is the chemistry behind it, and the fact that our law enforcement has already brought it to our attention that this is not something they support. And this is on the county and the local, and the semi-local level. I, I, I'm not, I'm not undermining the, the resolution at all. It's already on the books anyway. And my question, though, still remains that, I mean, is that gonna be part of the resolution about the, the, I mean, it talks about.
If you look at the same resolutions, it's all about experiment.
It is.
That's not, that's not about.
Any control setting.
It's not about the Latin Caribbean.
That's right.
Caribbean, and that's.
And I don't think that's being, that's being accomplished right now.
Can we put anything in there about a conditional use permit? That seems to get everything we've been done right there, boys.
Y'all are confusing the mayor more so than I've ever been confused. We have a motion on the floor to reconsider the vote that was taken last time on the resolution. And we need to resolve that. We're either gonna reconsider it, or we're not gonna reconsider. I'd like to suggest that Councilman Hubbard withdraw that motion and, and put it on the agenda for the next time. Well, if you put it on the agenda for the next time, you're considering something you haven't voted on. He's bringing a U.
Bring it up as a discussion.
He's bringing a U for discussion. In other words, we're saying he needs to bring something to us to consider, not just to reconsider what we did before.
The problem is, Mayor, if you vote down the request for reconsideration, then you gotta figure out who's in the prevailing side that can bring it up next time, because you can't just put it on the agenda.
But if he withdraws, he can submit it to the agenda.
If the motion or the second are withdrew, then we wouldn't have an issue.
This week.
I tell you what, let me, let me say this. Let me, here you go, Brad, here's some waffling for you. It does not seem like anybody is really on to this situation. Maybe we should just, I should just table it for, for.
Withdraw it.
Withdraw it, and, and until maybe some other news comes out, or maybe the rest of the council feels more positive about it. How about that?
I think what I would like to see us do, if we, any, and I'm not opposed to reconsidering this thing at all, as you call, I voted for it, or against it, whichever. But, well, what I think we really should do, you know, we have Montgomery County's resolution. Charlottesville has approved it. There's some other places. Can we get ahold of those resolutions?
That's pretty much what we're looking at.
We approved Montgomery County, did we approve city of Charlottesville?
It's pretty much the one you voted yes for.
That was Montgomery County.
It is, my understanding is pretty much the same across the board.
Mr. Hubbard, are you withdrawing your?
Yes, sir, I am.
Your request to reconsider, and you're withdrawing your second to.
Mike did.
Mike did, but I'm sure that was me. All right, then we're right back where we were, and if you want to put it on the agenda at some future time, we would be amenable to that.
Okay, that sounds good.
But it's still the same as reconsideration.
Okay, and a different resolution isn't being reconsidered.
Yes, it's a different resolution, right. All right, that's a good idea. And I guess next question, you want me to take a look at the resolutions and.
Well, Mayor, I think this could go in with your new policy where the member can rewrite it.
Andrew, you're a wonderful person.
Mr. Hubbard, you're not.
Mayor, you can, you can prove it.
I think we're gonna dismiss it for right now.
All right, Mr. Helms.
We have two public hearings to set.
We've got two minutes.
Public hearing for rezoning request for property one seventy-five East Street, approximately six point six acre portion of tax parcel five twenty-eight A, dash twenty-three from I two, general industrial to B three, general business. This is a portion of Chedle's Mobile Home Park. And then the second one would be a contingent on the above rezoning, a condition use permit for an overnight park at one seventy-five East Street, approximately six point six acre portion of tax parcel five twenty-eight A, twenty-three, and the B three general business district. And we can set that for the third of April.
Seven, second April, third. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Mr. Helms, did you say an overnight park was?
Yes. There, well, we'll talk about it. Second thing I have is, I need to get council's permission, if they will, to authorize me to sign the agreement with, with the B dot on the one fourteen project, that we'll pay our two percent.
Absolutely.
Second.
All right, he is our, look, it's a contract agent anyway, so all in favor of allowing him to sign the agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Is, is that project, has bids been received on it?
It's bid at the end of March.
Bid's received or bids open?
Should open at the end of March.
Okay.
So we're looking, Jim, you're right.
Start construction, I think.
Sixty to ninety days after that.
Ms. Wilberham handed out a communications plan that she will be prepared to discuss at the next meeting. She'll have a chance to look at it before she presents it the next meeting. And the last thing I have is, the mayor received a notice from the Department of Corrections that they'd like to open a parole probation office at eight Ransford Street, Dr. Smith's old building, medical building there. And they want to make you aware of that. You can request a public hearing if you'd like to have a public hearing on.
They have had offices in this area before, and they don't house inmates there. It's the folks are reporting to their probation officer. So they would be coming and going. It's never created a problem in the past when they had it quite close by here, so.
How long has that buil- building been sitting there too? It's a nice building. It's just a shame to have it been, kind of, three or four years.
It's not empty.
No, it's just, I think they have two suites or two spaces available for lease.
Oh, okay.
I saw a flyer come through my office today, somebody announcing that they had these two spaces available, but it's not, it's not been sitting empty. I thought it had to.
I have, I have, oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, go ahead.
I have a suggestion. A lot of times, B dot on some of these projects will, it's called postal willingness to hold a public hearing. They don't necessarily hold one, but in this case, my only concern, and I, I think it's fine, but maybe as a courtesy, because of the nature of the land use to the surrounding property owners that, that, that they had listed in their letter, is for the town, the town to aware them that this is going on, and note that they can come to the town office and find out more information about this and so forth. And then, you know, if, if a public hearing, or if that's not enough, then we can hold a public.
Yeah, the, they are required by law to notify the locality that there is an office going to open.
Right.
We have ninety days to request a public hearing on the issue.
I guess I'm saying, I don't think we need a public hearing, but I think those property owners should be notified, the adjacent property owners. But that's my thought, and other council members' thoughts. That's the only thing I think that stood out to me is.
Notification by.
Just a letter. No, just a letter, not even a certified letter. I'd say a letter.
Letter to the adjoining property owner.
We do for a public hearing, yeah.
Well, I know, but then we get into.
I agree.
A big.
I agree, that's good.
I got one quick question. Where is that building actually located?
Right next to where Francis Anthony's was.
Okay.
It's a two-story brick building.
Okay, right on the corner side.
Right next to the Knights of Columbus there.
But a simple letter says, this is, you know, proposed land use, please come to.
Can we do that, Mr. Helms, notify the adjac- the adjacent property owners?
The only issue I would have, and I was talking to the, the only issue I was wondering about is if we, if it's a probation, depending if they're a, frankly, convicted sex offender, or they're on the registry, it's gonna be within five hundred feet of your school room, because the middle school's now being used for Blacksburg.
Okay, let's follow it. We're, we're about through anyway, but.
Once they realize that.
The wire that the schools with there.
I think that we, I think you, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if it's the building or if it's the grounds. I want to say it's the grounds. That if it's within five hundred, I think the law, if it's within five hundred feet, then there has to be a.
I can notify the person who sent this letter and tell them that the middle school is there. Are there any restrictions?
I mean, as far as the building itself, it's really, probably something we really need closer by, but, but that's the only thing I was wanting, I was just, just kind of popped in. But I don't, I don't know the law on that. I'm just thinking about that.
Well, that'll work out of offenders. They all, I'm sure there's a.
Well, that, well, there's gonna be, I'm, I'm sure there's gonna be, that's somebody that's on the offender registry, I'm sure, at some point.
What else, Mr. Helms? Is that all you got?
I got a few things.
Anybody else?
Just a few things. On our list, our master list, this follow-up with the probation office would be something I would like to have on here, so we can find out about that. Also, for the cup information going online, if we can put that full July follow-up, because I think Randy said it'd be about five months. Is your team enough time to get it going to where we got a follow-up? I got a follow-up on the rec center age limit, Mike, I thought.
I can report on that right now, if you're interested, or you want that to go on the agenda next time.
I'd like to hear it on the next agenda.
Okay, get that on the next agenda. I'd also like, Mayor, one more thing, we mentioned traffic reports. I would like to see the street committee to where we, you know, part of the packet for these large developments, they have to do it. Not come in after it's already gone up for a public hearing and be proffered in there.
We, we brought that up about a year and a half ago.
Right.
Support wasn't there, but I think there might be support for that now. We're just gonna identify a trigger. I think we've got some good language now. But yes, I would, I'd be happy to take that up with Councilman Van Usher and come up with something for council's consideration.
That's a good point.
And just for what it's worth, the proposal that came before us, again, I have no issue with that development. My issue is just with that traffic process. And, and, and we stated that it probably wouldn't have to be built. In my mind, I, I hate just taking it, getting it out of our hands. I understand that they're gonna do a study. But I'd like to have some type of oversight locally that we could have, but right now, we're kind of at the, really, we're at the direction of the, of the traffic study, and that's it. We don't have any say-so at this point. Again, I thought what Mr. Bar brought up last time was a valid point. I concur with it that there needs to be, I would think there needs to be a left turning lane there in Franklin.
Actually, we do have a say-so. Uh, uh.
Street committee, but they're gonna be bound by the recommendation from the B dot study.
We're not bound by it.
Does it, does it say?
We may have to have some good reason for not complying with it, but we're not bound by it.
This is, this, what we're requiring right now is a hundred times more control than we've ever had to overcome. And we need to be doing more for large traffic.
Right.
All right, gentlemen, not to speak for alone, but is there anything else?
I didn't feel like.
Wait a minute, man, I have, I have one last.
Oh, okay.
You put up blue and white signs, banners with snowflakes on them. They worked. The snow. So we took them down and we put flags up. For President's Day, and now the, the, the snowflake banners have gone back up today, so watch out.
I'd like to comment how nice they look.
Yes.
Well, I've got several comments.
From, from a perspective of seeing them actually out, I, I liked them very much.
My wife sent me congratulations. She saw me at the day.
Yep, love comments.
And they match those directional signs that we had in Florida.